Oh, it's July, isn't it? Welcome to July, everybody. Our July 2nd Douglas County Commission Work Session. Thanks to those of you who are here with us and if you're visiting with us online, we appreciate you being here too. Work sessions are for informational purposes only. No action is taken. And we do not have a public comment period at this time, but we will begin a business meeting at 5:30 PM, where we always have general public comment and we welcome any feedback at that time if you wish to share it. And with that, I will, and I'll just make a note that we've got Commissioner Kelly here virtually with us. And I'll be running the meeting accordingly, but for now I'm going to turn it over to Sean. I'm like Chief or Sean?
Yeah. No, thank you, Commissioner. Tonight, we are going to go through a report that was conducted, a technical sort of assessment of Consolidated Fire District One. Just kind of by way of introduction, this is a really meant to be a high level overview of Consolidated. And the idea being that we're sort of at a really great crossroads right now with, within sort of the five year mark of the formation of Consolidated Fire District. And what we've done is we brought in ESCI, and I have Jeff Stone on, who will kind of go through the process that was undertaken and then also some of the recommendations that they found through this effort. So Jeff, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you. You'll have to unmute.
Sorry. As much as we do this, you think we'd learn to mute and unmute? So hey, appreciate y'all taking time. I know it's right before the holidays and appreciate y'all letting us have time to come in and kind of go over the report and the findings we found with the team that came in and did the agency assessment with everything. As Sean said, this is just a quick, high level overview, I think. And Sean, please correct me if I'm wrong, we sent the report in a couple of weeks ago, so I'm not sure if everybody's had a chance to look through it. I know it can be quite dawning. It was, you know, a lot of, you know, close to 100 pages there, so that's a lot of information. We definitely do not want to try to go through all that tonight. So this is just some high level overview aspects of it. And kind of hit the highlights and key recommendations and findings we found through the, through the report and our analysis of the Douglas County Consolidated Fire District. So if you're ready, Sean, you said I should be able to share my screen and we can jump into the report? Or is there any questions before we start?
No, I think you're good to go.
Okay. Let me share here and just, please let me know as we start if it's not. Does everybody able to see it? Should say our caption slide there, Douglas County Consolidated Fire District One Agency Evaluation?
Yes, sir.
All right, good deal. So as Sean introduced, my name is Jeff Stone. I was, we're part of ESCI, Emergency Service Consulting International. We, just to give you a background of that, on with us is Joanne Lober. She was one of your, the team members here. We, Jeff Groth, who was also there, is not able to join us today. He ended up coming down sick yesterday, so he's not able to join. So, but just a quick background about ESCI and both ourselves, so you kind of know who came in and did the evaluation. ESCI has been around since about the mid 70s, in the mid 2000s. We were bought by the I-Cheese International Association of Fire Chiefs. And then we became a consulting arm for them. So we are an international corporation, or entity consulting firm. We do projects all over throughout the US, Canada, even in some South America. And so we rely ourselves on most of all the project managers. We are all, you know, heavily 30, 35 years within the fire service is our backgrounds, EMS, fire. We have police, we have about 60 consultants that we, contract associates that we use that are either, you know, still actively working or retired. And we pretty much have somebody in almost every state or at least one state next to it. For instance, Jeff Groth, who's again, he's there in Kansas, so we try to have somebody familiar with the state laws and kind of how each community operates. But we base up everything I do, we're reliant heavily on analytics as well as GIS and geocoding. And we use that to really, as our foundation of how we analyze almost all our projects. So, and then we do project services for all, all types of organizations and communities, from municipalities to counties to fire districts. We have a couple of state contracts coming up, so you know, we try to really burst ourselves in what we allow and come in and provide to each of the communities. Little bit background about each of us, myself, I'm here from Georgia. I retired in 2003 after 30 years of service. Joanne is out of Florida. She retired after 31 years with a large fire EMS agency down there. And then Jeff, he retired after 36 years there in Kansas. So, kind of jump into what we did. So when we were reached out, one of the things we do as an agency evaluation, we focus on the assessment of the department and the things we end up looking at, or obviously the department structure, the service delivery, the response performance. And that's how long, how many calls go on, how long it takes to get there, how quick those things happen. And then we use the national standards as kind of our benchmark tool. It doesn't say you have to meet those, but that's a good tool that everybody kind of looks at as to whether, you know, how are we performing against others? We try to cautiously not compare you to another community around the country for the simple fact that every community is unique and they have, they face their own challenges and, you know, what goes on with them, within them. So, so we use the national standard. That's what everybody kind of, again, tries to strive for as a, as a, as a benchmark or a goal. Again, the methodology we used, you heard someone was talking, as I stated, we go through and use GIS and the data analytics rely heavily upon that. Part of what also went on is we came in with Joanne and Jeff came in, did a site visit. They were there for several days, speaking with everybody throughout the community and all the different members without, through the Consolidated Fire District. We also looked at your stations and your apparatus and did an assessment on those. And then utilizing all that from what we learned in the community, looking at the response apparatus or your apparatus and the response performance and the overall kind of the structure of how those things, we provided some identification of what we call gaps and actionable recommendations. So these are things that, from our experience, what we learned from y'all of how, you know, here's some things that you could, you know, work on to provide a better service to the community. And again, all our goals and every situation that we, every project we do is, our number one goal is to make sure that you can provide a better service or the best service to your community. And sometimes that's just a matter of doing some things a little bit different or adding some services or tweaking them. So, kind of jump in again, as I said, this is high level. Some of the key findings, there needs to be enhancement of some of the staffing level to meet the response and time goals. We noticed some gaps there of, you know, just again, especially with when you have combination departments, volunteers aren't always able to respond. So, you know, there's a time, and especially this day and age of society and around our nation, we're seeing that, you know, there's that concern or, you know, discussion of should we start moving to some type of paid, whether that be part-time or full-time personnel to help, you know, minimize those gaps of when the response. Because when somebody calls 911, there's an expectation that somebody's going to come. Now that expectation can be, hey, we can wait 10 minutes, we can wait 20 minutes. Or some people, some communities want them there when two or three minutes. Again, all those are dependent on your community and obviously they require funding and money to support every bit of that. Other things, upgrading your training programs, just some of the standards. You know, there's training that goes on within the district. But, you know, ensuring that those programs meet national standards and providing the best service to the people. As we all are, that's what we're doing here with technology, making sure that, you know, the structure and the, and the operation of the department is, you know, being utilized to the technologies available out there today. So that, that really makes our lives more efficient when used properly and it can be very effective. We did a huge review of your apparatus and your stations. You know, that's a big thing. Obviously, you have to have equipment to respond to these types of emergencies. Fire equipment, public safety equipment this day and time, everything is expensive. The fire service is suffering from, you know, after COVID, there's a two and three year, four year setback on gaining apparatus. So those are things that are really a challenge now, not to mention the fact that there, you know, a fire truck now is, you're looking at close to a million dollars to replace an engine. And in most cases, it's about two years out. Ladder trucks are about two, two and a half million dollars, and they're about four years out. So, so there's, there's a huge challenge, not only from the fact of can the funding be brought in, but, you know, how quick or how, you know, fast can we get these? So, and that's a challenge across the state of every agency and everybody in the fire service. And then the other one is developing a long-term strategic plan for infrastructure investment. And that kind of correlates with the, you know, looking at the apparatus and how long it takes and looking at the growth of, you know, Douglas County. What do you see happening and what are the, you know, items and apparatus and facilities and personnel that's going to be need? So, you know, sitting down and doing a 10 or 15 year, you know, long-term strategy and trying to plan that out and kind of have an idea of, you know, how much funding do we need? What, you know, what are the things coming down the road that we know about as far as planning and zoning and development, things like that? So those all tie together and that's something from y'all as the commission can, can make that decision working with the fire department and looking ahead. So one of the things, big things we looked at was staffing recommendation. This was, you know, talking with Chief, the Fire Chief, this is, we, he had a plan in place. And one of the things we did is we kind of helped tweak it a little bit and added some other, you know, our insight into it. But again, it's based on kind of a three-phase introduction. Converting the full-time firefighters you have now to a 24-hour shift, hiring two more firefighters. There's an administrative battalion chief position that is open. You know, really, you know, our suggestion is do the due diligence to try to get that position filled. Because there's a lot of duties that are being shared by the chief and some of the other current members that's just, can be overwhelming. So the staff is needed, both in the field and administratively. But if you hire those, that would result to, you know, increasing the staffing to two full-time firefighters on duty each day on a 24/7 basis. The secondly, implementation, and again, funding dependent, would be hire six more full-time firefighters. That would be able to deploy two more full-time firefighters. Our suggestions would be maybe at Station 111 and 151. And then the third phase would be three more full-time firefighters on that. And then include either, you know, you could possibly transition that administrative battalion or move somebody into some type of operational chief officer role to help oversee. Because now you're going to have a, you know, your members spread out throughout the district. And this is just kind of how that, you know, there's all kinds of different configurations you could do. These are some that we threw in there. You know, again, a chief officer and two firefighters at 111 and then three firefighters, once you have that full complement of staffing. Or, you know, one chief officer and one firefighter, that chief officer in that case would be doing a dual role, kind of a working boss, if y'all are familiar with that term. And then two firefighters at 141 and two at 151. So, so just, there's different kind of configurations. One of the big things that we always stress is, we know times are tight. Funding is always, you know, concern, but you should always at least have two people riding on a fire truck. You know, the day of having just one is just really a huge safety concern. So when you go to look down those roads of, you know, hiring these people or moving them around, the consideration of having at least two, two staff on a, on an engine or a piece of apparatus is really kind of the bare minimum. So we always focus towards that point. The recommendations at the end became, we kind of broke them up in several different categories. One of the first ones there was your current service, service delivery, infrastructure. These are just some operational things that we noticed. You have portable, the new portable radio system there, but, you know, they have a function, which God forbid, we never hope anybody has to use, but there's a function there, the emergency button. It needs to be enacted and make sure it operates properly. That's, that's a lifeline when somebody is potentially trapped in a, in an incident or in a burning house or anything like that. That firefighter can reach that and it alerts everybody. So it's a very huge thing. As big as your county is and the way it's spread out, one of the things we have is implement and maintain an ABL system, which is an auto vehicle location system. It's a GPS locate on your apparatus. You can start out with your engines or your main frontline trucks or apparatus. And basically what that does is very simple, if you're not familiar, when that apparatus is coming off of another call, they may be closer to a station, but maybe not in another station's response zone. The communication center and the CAD using that GPS can alert that and it will notice instead of what's normally a station that may be three miles down the road within their response zone, this station or this apparatus may be riding by and it's only a mile away and it clicks them. So it just provides a better, quicker service for your citizens using that. And that goes back to that technology that we were talking about earlier. And then the third one there, collaborate Douglas County Merchant Communication, install the ABL system and reprogram the portables. Again, the same thing, it's just kind of culminating that, but that's, this is going to be, not only does the fire department need to step up, you know, and look at these things on their side, but there needs to be, you know, a coalition with the communications department because they have to interact with each other. Again, the phased in staffing, as we mentioned earlier in the earlier, you know, stations 151, 141, 111, those we saw to be the, what we call hotspots for instant activity. So that's why we suggested those stations would garner your full-time personnel. And then what we see is it's not a critical factor now, but we do see that there's a potential with the expected growth, talking in the discussions and down the road, but in the area around Udora between Stations 153 and 112. Potentially, you know, not necessarily immediately, but in with the next two or three years, as that area grows. As we always say, the more people you have in area, the more calls you're going to have to bring in. Are there going to cause, just people are where the incidents and call volume occurs? So we saw that as not an immediate need, but the Udora area right there would definitely probably in the next, you know, several years, probably need some attention. So we just go ahead and say, start monitoring that and as it rises, you know, continue accordingly. The next thing is just the management within the structure of the fire service. You know, implementing some type of standard email address, emails are, you know, it's somewhat, people say it's antiquated, but it's still a viable means of communication. One of the things we saw is there was a lot of different emails and trying to do those. If there could be, you know, some type of consistent email domain, whether it be Douglas County Fire, Consolidated District, whatever it is created and everybody has that, then it's all in the same. There are still some technology issues out there with some domain, email domains not communicating with others. So sometimes that can get lost. And then everybody's also feels part of a single entity agency. So it kind of helps with that morale and aspect and it's, you know, adds a little bit of professionalism to when the communication goes out amongst everybody and anybody outside your agency. Updating the, you know, Douglas County webpage for the recruitment details to help attract those volunteers that are needed. And then as you staff stations and then anything that the fire department does along the way. Use that, this, this time, we all, we all use, you know, our little, that's, we have a computer in our hand and that's where a lot of things are. And again, the next one down, the Facebook, you know, assure somebody is, you know, maintaining that. It's a social media, you know, there's, they're, they're a great tool and they can be also a, you know, a harmful tool. You know, there just has to be some monitoring in place and some, you know, basic rules from, you know, both sides of that. But they're great tools to use to help establish and recruiting new members. And it also helps retention and praising the current members you have in any of the aspects that is going on within the fire department, especially when they, you know, something big has happened or, you know, if there's any event going on. Again, the officers that are throughout the department, as people move up in rank, you know, obviously this is because there's a knowledge and skill and experience there. We really suggest that those people try to help contribute to the training program. It doesn't do any good for somebody to have 15, 20, 30, 40 years of knowledge and they don't share that. So then that's wasted knowledge and we always need to train those that are coming on. So with them getting involved, that'll help with what is best for the department. And also as officers, they know what is going on within the department, where the training areas, you know, where there may be gaps or concerns of, hey, we need to brush up on this technique or these strategies or these tactics. So, and obviously as new policies come out within the department, they can do that. And then one of the other things we kind of suggest is holding a monthly meeting for the full-time, part-time and volunteers. You know, again, let everybody come together, kind of know what's going on with the department. And, you know, be allowed to, you know, have their input and then hear from what's going on. Instead of, you know, again, go and try and say, hey, we sent out an email. Not everybody reads emails. They don't always get them. So, so there's some other things. I'm going to turn over, Joanne's going to talk about some of these. Joanne, you want to pick up some of these?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Another recommendation was conduct an annual review of their SOPs and SOGs to ensure they are updated according to the department standard. We found that they were there, but a lot of people couldn't find them, which goes along with number seven, making them accessible to everybody through digital access. Then they use first do as a reporting system and basically the administrative specialist does little training tips on it, but actually having the lieutenants going out and training would be a really good suggestion. We noticed there really wasn't a clear rank structure within the department to define the chain of command and promotes order, accountability and efficient decision-making. Also, and I hate to say this, then start installing security cameras and using access control to your stations. It is 2025 and I know you guys are out in Kansas and it's quiet out there, but you just never know what can happen. Jeff, can you turn the? When we looked at the organizational planning process, definitely developing a strategic plan with measurable goals to track performance and improve accountability. Eventually work on a master plan that will go over a five, five to 10-year outlook on the department. Drafting a five-year capital improvement plan for apparatus replacement, the facilities, tools, equipment. And definitely engaging you county leaders and the other public safety officials to address the critical issues that are ahead for the future. This one was my partners. No, actually this was mine. Definitely do a training committee. Right now, I think one of the lieutenants does the training or the fire chief or one of the deputy chiefs. But if you actually form a committee from outside the paid departments, because many of the people are working full-time and they can bring in training from what they've learned and bring it to the volunteers and actually really develop a well-rounded training program. Form partnerships with the local institutions to help in any specialized topics. They used to have a year-long training calendar. That's kind of gone to the wayside. So bringing that back would be a very good suggestion. Definitely conducting training sessions in each district and providing make-up dates. Because as of right now, we were told that they only do training at the Wacarusa Training Station and not really around. So it's easy if you just kind of be mobile and move things around. And then in the long run, maybe building a comprehensive training facility, which is centrally located, so everybody can go in and train. Next, please. Update their recruit taskbooks to reflect any new technologies and new techniques and standards to firefighting. Develop taskbooks for aspiring personnel to become drivers and detailed training modules and assessments to prepare them for their roles. Creating taskbooks for personnel aiming to become officers, covering leadership training, strategic planning and other essentials. And ensure that everybody is adequately trained for grass and wildland fires by obtaining their red card certifications to manage wildlands. The facilities, definitely for the ones where personnel are living, they need to install exhaust removal systems in the facilities to improve air quality and reduce health risks. Replacing all this signage outside the stations with CFD branding for better visibility and consistency. Discontinue the volunteer living arrangements at fire stations to mitigate legal liabilities. I believe that was the resident. End monthly lease program with Lone Pine Farms and relocate apparatus to other locations and decommission fire station 152. Equip facilities for full-time staffing with the D-Vazal exhaust system and PPE extractors. Relocate apparatus stored near Station 162 to improve the accessibility and organization. And then conduct legal reviews of fixed facilities to clarify who owns them, the liability and who's responsible for the maintenance. On apparatus, develop an apparatus replacement plan with criteria, timelines and budgets. When we spoke to the fleet manager, he said he's currently working on that. Definitely phase out your outdated apparatus, evaluate what fleet you really need and what redundant equipment needs to be removed. Implement vigorous maintenance schedules and hire an emergency vehicle technician for advanced maintenance and diagnostics, so you don't always have to send your apparatus out of town.
And that, that's kind of, again, the high level overview. Again, there's a lot in the reports that delves deeply into all those little aspects of everything we sent there. But are there any questions? Again, we can entertain some high level thoughts. Or if we need to get in some deep, I've got the report here, we can go to some specifics. I just want to be cognizant of y'all's time.
Jeff, can, can you start by just not sharing your screen anymore so we can get that opened up? And then I do just want to acknowledge, that's a lot of information, to put it lightly. And one thing, I, I've kind of said this through this process, is that this is about putting all the spaghetti on the table and really starting to kind of understand the, the dynamics, the opportunities, more importantly, for the future. One thing that you probably saw missing on this is a timeline. There is no timeline attached to this right now. This is really meant to be, again, a conversation starter and maybe a power tool, to use that phrase, to really leverage and be proactive about the future, so that we're not reacting to circumstances as they come at us, but rather, again, being proactive and being mindful of what the future holds for, for Consolidated Fire District and the county generally as well. So I do just kind of want to leave you with that as you're asking your question. So I'll turn it over to the commission if they have any questions for Jeff and the team there.
I have so very many, but I want to start with, what is the, what is the plan for how we discuss what's in here and who gets to sit at the table for that? Because it's certainly not something that's going to be covered in the next half hour with just this group of people.
No, absolutely. I think that this is, this was, like I said, the starting piece here. Ultimately, this is a conversation that we wanted to have with the commission and get you all the report and allow you to digest that. I would say there are probably some low-hanging fruit there when we talk about things like signs. There's an opportunity, I think, to just, again, take something out of this report. But, you know, I would look to you all for some of that direction though. Ultimately, how would you like to go about this process moving forward? There are no wrong answers, I don't think, at this point, as far as where we're at. So, you know, ultimately, if the commission wants to take an approach, we're, we're all ears. I don't know if John, Chief, if you have any other thoughts on that either. But again, we're really anxious to really start getting into this. So any direction you all have is what we're here for tonight.
I have a few high level thoughts and then I'm going to have so many questions that we won't. I have a few high level thoughts and then I, I mean, I have so many questions that we won't get to them all tonight. So I just want to, um, manage everybody's time here too, but. I think first and foremost, um, s- some of what's being brought up here is not just a discussion for one department within Douglas County. But for a larger discussion about how do we do fire service and EMS countywide? So to, to really get much further with what's in this report, it's really not just talking about Consolidated Fire District One. It's talking about District Two, District Three, District Four and LDCFM. So I think that's, I just want to keep in mind that it's not going to be a package deal or we just deal with CFD one. Like there are pieces in here that are a broader discussion for fire service. I also just want to flag that. Within this report, it's the, uh, if money were no object, we would add a dozen staff, uh, paid staff. We would replace fifteen out of thirty-six of our apparatus in this 2025 year. We'd add new tech, we'd add new facilities, like some of these things are not going to be on the table at all. So I need to kind of pull back and say what's realistic of what we see here and there will be trade-offs. So, um, there were some. Comments about, about stations and some of our stations are in terrible shape. And so recognize that, uh, but also these are. Portions of the county, the, the two that were most flagged, one that has the falling out floor that's been kind of abandoned with that lease, uh, which is why we've got apparatus at Lone Pine. And then one that we don't even know who owns the building and it's in bad shape. Both of those cover really critical parts of where we have long response times, especially for EMS in the west quarter, maybe of the county. So, um, I certainly wouldn't see making a change to, um, what we have working for the moment with. Where apparatus are stored when that area needs something and there aren't a lot of other options, but. With that, can I ask a couple of questions? Okay, thanks.
Well, or maybe, I guess maybe before you jump into the specifics, I think one of the things that we can do as staff is try to. Take those pieces apart and sort of identify if there are countywide issues. Obviously. You're not the fire board for, uh, districts two and three, and so we would need to, or four. And you're not for LDCFM, you're a part of that partnership. So I think like we would want to identify if there are countywide issues and then figure out how to approach those. But furthermore, and, and I think staff could talk, begin to talk about what do we think is feasible inside the existing budget and set some priorities for that. And bring that to the commission before you. Just to create some structure.
So I have a couple of specific questions for the, for ESCI folks. Um, one is something that, uh, in, in my interview with you, so it's probably for a Joanne question. There was talk about, you know, from ESCI, talk about a, a model of, you know, a student residency kind of, um, model. Where you've got people who are going through their fire school, but they're also living at a station and providing some services at a contract. None of that was in here and instead we heard the part about like when we do have someone living at a station, we need to make sure that that is, is not done. Can you just help me understand like, is that, is there a model for that that is worth us looking at or is that not something you're recommending?
From what we gathered, you had a residency program and the, the person that was living there really didn't participate in it. So what we were told was didn't. Upon our conversations with other people is to, don't use the residency program. Both myself and Jeff, if you really want a residency program in that station, you just have to upkeep it and make sure they actually participate.
So, and what I'd heard from, from you and from Jeff in that meeting was a, a lot of positives about a program like that. And I just wondered if there were national programs that are working that you could send our way to look at and then we can evaluate if that's a fit for here or not.
In my travels, I have not come across any of that yet, but, um, Jeff, you?
Yeah, I, I've, I've come across two agencies. As far as a national program, I'm not familiar with a national program. But we have, uh, I've run into two communities. Uh, I reviewed a safer grant a couple of years ago. Uh, I don't remember the name of it, uh, and we weren't allowed to come out with that information anyway. But they were in the northeast area. Uh, they were utilizing, uh, partnering with, they had a college in their town. Uh, and they were partnering with college students and giving, helping tuition if they would come in and help volunteer. They would give them some, uh, housing and, you know, lodging, uh, re- reimbursement. Uh, so that's one of them that was kind of. I, I don't, I don't think y'all have a very large college population there, so I don't know that that would work. The another one that I did have come across is in upper state Idaho, up near like the Sun Valley area. They were actually building these, for lack of better terms, little duplexes, you know, I think they were maybe eight, nine hundred. Square foot little homes, uh, that would house two, uh, they were building, starting to build some big ones that house four. But they had a, a cooperative program that, uh, they would provide housing for these people. And their target was anybody from like, you know, eighteen, nineteen years up to, you know, mid twenties, early, you know, early thirties.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I know we have a lot to get to. I don't want to hang a lot on that. I'm just was, uh, flagging that. However, how much enthusiasm I'd heard from your team, I was surprised not to see it in here. So if there's something to pass along, that's great, but I, I don't think that's today's big discussion, if that's all right. Okay.
Sure.
Uh, a- another thing that I think I heard a lot in discussions that I thought would be in here that I, I don't really see. Is how do we unfold the, the, the cultural difference between a, a, a department that has paid staff and volunteer staff? Cause I hear that being a big tension and i- if, instead of just a recommendation to hire more, um, paid staff. I really think we need help and how do we integrate those into one seamless organization and one culture? Is, is that something you can offer some advice on?
That's all through communication. Actually, starting to have the meetings with the full-time, the part-time and the volunteer staff, instead of having all separate meetings. Bringing everybody together, having everybody have the same emails, i- it all starts with the communication.
So I would kind of pitch it back to our group. Um, I think that org chart is something that it, you know, it certainly brought red flags to me, you know, we. You know, through incident command, we hear span of controls, best is three to five, and here we've got some that it's, you know, one to one to one to one to one. We have a, a chain of command that, um, is, is maybe not accomplishing what we need it to be. And then we have this mix between, we've got some, you know, highly, uh, highly skilled volunteer officers. But they're possibly answering to, um, full-time staff that's hired, that's still working on firefighter one and firefighter two. So like, how do we manage that culturally within a department? And Chief, that might be a, a question I pitched back to you, uh, and really just flagging that I think it's something we'll need to work on.
Just to address that specifically, sorry, just to address that specifically, it's typically been an issue of time commitments. And having been a career firefighter and a volunteer, I did not, well. As assistant chief out at Walker, so during that, but there's been many and there currently are. Firefighters that are officers on other departments, they don't have the time commitment to participate and maintain that credibility at the CFD level.
I don't want to steal the show. I have a lot of other questions that will follow into future conversations, but pitch it back to our vice chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. Um, I think. Right now, there's no question top of mind. Um, it is a lot of information to digest. Um, Chief, I appreciated. Reading, you know, the perspective from you that was shared throughout this in addition to kind of all the, um. The collective recommendations that, that are quite thorough. And I do appreciate the approach that this is a foundational tool to. Sort of, I mean, this is a relatively new department still, all things considered, um, and the dynamics are such that there's. History there, um, but as it currently exists, it is, um, it is new and therefore there, it's a big learning curve of what we didn't know before. We were consolidated district to some degree. And so I'm hopeful that this is an opportunity. As the stakeholders come together and we figure out who. Who is critical to that conversation to start really triaging and prioritizing, you know, and I think that that comes part and parcel. With like being able to, uh, identify low hanging fruit, as you said, Sean, I think that that, that can be a good momentum builder. If there's some like immediate things, um, that seem within grasp and tangible, um, to make some progress on. That might help start getting some momentum towards these goals while also doing the work of sort of sorting out what is. What fits into those three different phases that we got an overview of that don't currently have a timeline, a ti- timeline attached. And trying to determine what is sort of. Within reach for, you know, in the, um, relatively near future, right? I think that's part of the process is determining what those tangible tasks in each phase. If we were to ideally start stair stepping all of those things out. And be able to identify within each phase which, what's possible, um, and within reach and for us to create some strategies around. And what feels like a longer term, sort of too far away. I think that's an important part of the process to. Make it feel more manageable and know that there's, um, so you know, that a five-year peli- plan of what it is that we can gradually work towards. To sort of shore up, um, the next few iterations of this department as it grows and evolves. So I just share that as feedback that I, I've heard the commission asked for, um, to sort of share any feedback about how to address that. I think that there's just a lot of wisdom to sort of baby stepping it out and, and part of that. Is having all the information in one really dense place, um, and then being able to suss out. With the practitioners on the ground, um, and administrators, firefighters. And county leaders alike to determine, um, what feels. Most critical to focus on, like what has the biggest negative impact right now that's really maybe holding back the capacity of the department? And that that might, you know, need our focus first, um, so.
I don't know if that was a question, but staffing. Just the bandwidth to get all these things that most of this is not surprises to anybody on this department. And stuff's already in place like the emergency buttons, uh. We already had a member back last fall, starting this process of science going, there's a lot of this that's been started. But it's enough bandwidth and I know the Italian chief position was not filled, but we just. Upper staff had discussions like, we need boots on the ground and to, and to retain staff. For the roles they were playing that were. It's not an entry level position that we have. You have a lot of responsibility and a lot of experiences needed. And from taking on SCBA management, P P E management, just to having the experience of you're rolling up on a. Fire, making life and death decisions, you need more than. A year or two like I did when I worked a shift. But, um, retaining those persons, because we've had a hundred percent turnover in the last year. And, um, through support of Sean and Sarah and stuff, been able to pay the current people. At the level of market that their cohorts are making just across the county line. And for the level of responsibility they are maintaining or. Performing. But that staff is, is, it's a conundrum. It's like, and it needs to be in this, we'd already discussed in budget, it's, it's an assistant chief level. Responsibility. And as needed as it is, as little. As much bandwidth as all this demands. At least for right this year was, let's not fill this and put that in for retaining the good staff we have on hand. And trying to shore up our staffing, we need boots on the ground more than they needed another me.
I hear that. I really appreciate that, Chief, and, um, I mean, that makes sense to me given the, the circumstances. And I do think that that anecdotal, um, daily real life experience is obviously critical to this process. So and also it's really positive to hear that you feel, um, that even though it is a, a large dense report, that most of it is. Maybe if not, all of it is not a surprise to you and that there are things that have already been flagged by the department along the way as things that. We need to make some progress on and start work on. And so that momentum is already going, which I think is positive and. Yeah, I just appreciate some further context and I really just wanted to offer that feedback. I don't have any particular questions about the report at this time, but commissioners.
So appreciate your feedback and appreciate all the work on the report. Uh, I guess what I would ask is. We know that LDCFM is being asked to cut. We know that consolidated number one is being asked to staff up. Is there a balance that we can then achieve? So if we know that there are going to be cuts and we have staffing that needs to happen over here. Can we achieve a balance? And so I guess that's the analysis that I would, that if there's low hanging fruit, is that an analysis that we can take a look at? And maybe is there a recommendation that can come forward that we can evaluate?
Yeah, I think it's going to be complicated because, you know, technically our, we don't have responsibility for fire inside the city of Lawrence with LDCFM. So, you know, it's, it's too, there's a lot of governing bodies involved here. And so.
Are the skills, do people have skill sets that are transferable?
Not, I mean, not necessarily, and, and I'm, I'm the least knowledgeable person in the room here about how this all works. But having gone through a chief search, it's very different to hook up your hose to a fire hydrant than it is to take water to a scene. And, and so I, I, I'm not, I mean, I think those are, I think there's some cross-training that can be done, but it's. Not necess- and, and I think the way LDCFM is approaching their reductions is really around. Hopefully, uh, early retirements and some of those types of things, so.
If I might.
Please.
I think, actually, and I. I likened all this down to staffing stations and steel, just to simplify it. And there's ways. Prioritizing, and I said staffing, because it.
Bring that a little closer so they can.
Oh. Yeah, there's things that can be prioritized in there. Maintenance costs are going to increase if, you know, trucks are going to fail, but. Hopefully not tomorrow, but. There's a cost for dragging some of that out. Like I said, the staffing creates bandwidth to, one, have efficient training. You're not one person training by yourself. That doesn't work. You're responding with two people, training with two people. You're a functioning company when you show up on scene. But it also creates a safety in that. You know, what we just, I don't want to play on this and it's, but, you know, what we just saw in Idaho. One of the reasons I'm looking, I've been looking at ABLs, not for the vehicle location dispatch. But if one person by themselves dodges a deer in the middle of the night, who knows? Okay, so, but with that comes an efficiency and it, because our, looking at our call volume and our, um, in the data. Of around Station 111, um, out at Broken Arrow Park. But our other big demand area has been. As you, the old township names is La Compton and Kanwaka. And they are our second highest demand rate and we have a partial shift out there. Of not full-time coverage, but it also an extended response times. And we have some of the data and times of just how long it takes, I don't have it in front of me. But that mimics us supporting that. Supports where LDCFM has some of their longest times in that demand, rural, I think it's rural demand zone three. And we have the ability to support that. And I don't know if it's quite the way y'all were envisioning that, but. We're first responders. We need the fire response out there. La Compton has a great cultural value with irreplaceable national history. Accessibility wise, moving that station because it's again, or moving the staffing farther south. Expands the coverage into a quicker response time for more people. Like when you call, we show up sooner and expands coverage and accessibility down into that west side of the lake. It's such a problem for anybody. So to come back around to it, I think us being able to expand on this accommodates and. Kind of buffers is a quite, quite the right word, but helps. Support LDCFM's mission, supports our own mission on EMS and fire and all that. And also supports getting those, um. E R F numbers, I know they talked to you, I know, you know, instead of a six, bringing a second medic unit out to. Stall for cardiac arrest, we have more people there that are EMS trained and that's part of the staffing, um, thing. But also, it also supports by doing that. Of. Making their system that's part of the county be less brittle. It keeps one medic unit possibly in play longer. So I think it's a very supportive, we have different issues that we need to address because of the fireside and needing EMS responders. And we have. Great, passionate, dedicated volunteers. But there's only so much in a bucket of water of their lives that they. But there's only so much in a bucket of water of their lives that they can give. And I sort of, just trying to increase that.
So am I hearing then that an analysis of the skillsets and the cuts would be potentially beneficial to see what a balance could look like? Is that what I'm hearing?
I believe so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I, I do just want to acknowledge too, that I think as it's kind of come up, this is an opportunity to, to have that conversation with those other stakeholders, recognizing that we all are sort of serving in similar functions. So there should be a level of cooperation and collaboration across the entire county, regardless of, of, of maybe, you know, where we're coming from. So I think there's some ample opportunities to, to talk about things with ECC or emergency communications. Or even, you know, at the, at the chief's meeting level that happens at the countywide. So again, I think that this is just start of the conversation. I just really want to kind of rebalance that and just say, you know, maybe there are opportunities to have that discussion as we're pacing forward. Absolutely.
So I read through this report and it is, you know, an analysis of one entity within our fire and EMS ecosystem. But I'm kind of looking at it as how do we take the recommendations here, recognizing we do not have jurisdiction over other pieces of that system. But we also can do more harm if we are addressing everybody's problems only in one spot. When we expect these organizations to work seamlessly together and with mutual aid, which, because they have to, that's the ecosystem. So that's why I wanted us to step back and say, well, what, what's the, what's the big picture? How does CFD one work well within the whole rest of our, of a fire and EMS ecosystem? So it will, that's why I want to see who else is going to be at the table for the next set of discussions. I would flag something that from the report that I think gets to the discussion that the two of you were having here. And that's that, that, that need for additional response between stations 153 and 112. And that's that farmer's turnpike area, which is also what, you know, LDCFM has flagged at north and northwest Lawrence as being, you know, difficult response times for, for, for them. So as we talk, as our, in our partnership with the city about, you know, with LDCFM about station placement for station six, which is on the city's CIP and on our CIP, can we have that be part of the conversation? Not that that's the, the end all be all, but like if that's, that doesn't address fire response in that area, because that is CFD one. But it would, it would help address kind of that co need for EMS response for that area. So that, that was one thought. One of the things that, you know, I don't think was within the scope of what was asked to be considered, but I don't want to narrow ourselves too much if we're looking at that larger ecosystem is, you know, the CFD one is very large. So it has, you know, multiple response zones within one jurisdiction. Is that problematic? Is there some other configuration that ought to be looked at too? And I don't want that to feel like a threat. I just want us to be open minded to like, is this, is this, is this the right configuration of that entity? And within that, what's the, you know, org chart that really makes that work well? Because I, I assume that things are dispatched kind of by station or by response zone, but that, that analysis wasn't in here. So, I mean, if everybody is getting paged for, you know, a call in rural Udora, if, even if you are, you know, if your normal station of responses, you know, of La Compton, like that's not a reasonable response. So I assume that there's another process in place, but again, that wasn't part of the, so I don't want to really spend a lot of time speaking to that.
They are dispatched by response zone. It rolls over as it defaults to the staff station.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Commissioner Kelly, I have a couple of comments if I can jump in. Thanks, Commissioner Reed. For one, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Willie that we need to bring this to a larger conversation. There are, quite honestly, there's some errors in the report itself. I'll reference a specific one that says commissioners are served two years. That's not accurate. Two of us are serving two years, all of us serve four. I'm sure it was just a small error. But then when I hear our consultants say that we're not a college, you know, that there's not a lot of college impact in Douglas County and we have three universities and a technical training center. It makes me question a little bit how well our consultant is aware of our community. I see their recommendation on there about changing signage. The history of this, as we did it, was that we would not change the signage. It was very specific. It was an ask by the departments as they moved together at the different townships. And so I'm concerned a little bit that while this report may highlight sort of the expectations and what the standards are, it doesn't address the real concerns that I think we need to dig deeper into, which are some cultural issues. You know, as, as the interim chief said, we've had a hundred percent turnover. Why? What's happening there? Why is that happening? And I'm not sure that this type of report does that, but, but I will say I'm a little disappointed. We didn't get some of the data that Commissioner Willie just referenced, you know, and how we're dispatching. There's some very interesting data about EMS mismatch around Udora and Baldwin, since we put EMS there that I would love to talk about with our partners at LDCFM. But I just think this is maybe a good starting spot, but I think we need to also recognize that there are things that are not included in this report or that maybe we didn't have a, at least I want, I'm curious how much we totally understood about the community that we're serving.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate those comments. Joanne, I see that you've raised your virtual hand. Did you have a comment you'd like to share?
Yes, in the report, we did mention three universities in the report. So unfortunately, my project manager must have overlooked that, but yes, we mentioned the three universities, sir.
Well, I want to bring it back. We are at 4:58, so we've still got a little bit of time. If there are some lingering questions that commissioners have that they want to be sure to bring up or any comments, feedback that they want to share with staff and our chief, who's here with us before we recess.
I guess if there's any way we can kind of let the public know like how, how they should engage with this report and who they should bring those comments back to, because I know there'll be future conversations. But I guess, is, is chief the person to come, come to with those? Is Sean, like maybe Sarah can line us out with that.
Well, obviously, you, the public can always present their comments to the Board of County Commissioners, who are the fire board for CFD one. Obviously, I would say chief's got a lot on his plate. So I'd say if they could direct him to Sean, he's sort of been serving as the project lead on this. And then it, you know, and then I think Sean will work with chief to prepare some next steps.
Well, thank you to our consultants for their assistance with the report. Thank you, Chief, and to your department for engaging in this process and seeing how it might be helpful and how it might boost some of the processes that you already, already have going. And if we can be of any particular assistance in providing more feedback as you move forward and get to some next planning phases, please come back and chat with us and we look forward to further conversation. All right, commissioners and anybody else who's with us, we will be in recess until our 5:30 business meeting begins. Thank you.